And I pray for everything that happens here today would be to your glory and to your honor. I thank you for the city of Goodlettsville. I thank you for the elected officials and for all those men and women who serve the city so well. And so, and we just thank you that Goodlettsville is a place that shines in Tennessee and even in the United States. We pray that you be honored here tonight and that you would bless every person in attendance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. All right, at this time, would everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Recorder, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Tenon.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. Commissioners, before you have the reading of the April 10th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners, by the Recorder for approval or correction, is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Minutes passed with a five-zero vote. At this time, we're going to open up the podium for citizen comments if anyone would like to speak. Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we'll close that portion. And before I get into city manager comments, Vice Mayor Duncan. Oh, you want to speak? I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
You're good.
I'm Michael Hunter. My wife Penny over here, we live at 802 Loretta. I've been there about 20 years now. We moved there, you know, the interstate was there, you kind of get used to it. But my question is, over the years, the volume has increased with, you know, vehicles and the noise too. Are there any plans to put a sound barrier up through that area? And if not, do you guys have any ideas or know what we could do to possibly get that done?
I haven't heard any that I'm aware of. Mr. Ellis, you have any?
Yeah, so there is, with the widening of I-65, there was studies that were done by TDOT. First off, not trying to pass responsibility in this, but it's something beyond our control. It's a state issue. And they say it does not qualify, from what my understanding is, for sound walls along the I-65 corridor. I do not mind passing your request on to them, but that is, that is a discussion that was had no less than probably four months ago with TDOT by staff.
Well, they got them down here at like the Cuniff Parkway area.
Yes, sir.
But they won't accept our proposal for one.
I'm not sure they really based the other one off a proposal. I think it's based upon sound volume or, I really am not certain myself because, like I said, it was based upon federal highway requirements and Tennessee Department of Transportation. But I will, if you'll leave me your name and number, I will definitely reach out to them again and say that we've had this request again.
Or is there something us citizens back there could possibly get a petition up to, you know, request? Would that help? Or that's, I'm just asking the question, what we could do to strengthen our request for it?
Well, I'd, it would probably be more effective in working and talking to your state officials because they're the ones that have purview over the departments in the state of Tennessee.
And who would that possibly be? Like Johnny Garrett or?
That would be one.
Okay. Well, that's all I got.
But if you, if you leave me your name and number, I will see what I find out and let you know, okay?
Can I do that now or wait till?
Just after the meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, before we go on to city manager comments, Vice Mayor Duncan wants, she has a few words.
I do. There are several of you here tonight that I know, and we are here for the Citizen Police Academy. We are graduating. If you don't know, myself and Commissioner Walker attended. But I just want to say a couple of words. I'll be real quick. Wow, okay, wow are my first words. Where do I start? Chief Goodwin, Commander Cherry Crawford, Commander Deloche, Lieutenant Petty, Sergeant Scannell, I mean, the entire department. I'm leaving some out, I know, but a big thank you to everyone. For those that don't know, the Goodlettsville Police Department does have a free Citizen Police Academy. And for the past six weeks, I met with a wonderful group of citizens here every Tuesday night. We were given a great dinner and basically we had a class. We learned about the function of our police department, daily operations, traffic investigations, DUI, traffic stops, fatalities, what police officers really deal with, the stress in real life. They were very real for us, and for that, I thank them all. They told their personal stories, which was heartfelt. You think you know what they do, but you really don't. And then you get to go on a ride along, and that was so awesome, okay? And very eye-opening. I can honestly say that we have the best, most courteous, knowledgeable policemen in our department. And it came away that night that I rode along with them in awe. I told them I would be telling everyone about this wonderful program, so I am. So if you're interested, you can be a part of the spring 2026 class, and I highly recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Walker, would you like to take?
I'll just add on everything that the Vice Mayor said. I had a wonderful experience with it. And yeah, definitely encourage all of the community to look into it. I just learn so much every week, love to meet more citizens here in town, and yeah, I just walked away with an eye-opening experience. My ride along will be hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so we have to get that scheduled. But I very much look forward to it, and I really appreciate the department, everything that they did.
Thank you. All right, moving on to city manager comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, tonight I have a couple of comments and also make you aware that I would like to add some things to a consent agenda that was not originally there. First is, our police department's memorial service will be on Wednesday, May the 21st at 10:00 a.m. at the Police Memorial at the corner of Memorial Drive and Main Street. Also, make those in attendance, those watching online and the board aware that there will be a special call Board of Commission meeting on May 29th at 7:00 p.m. here in the chambers. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, when we get to consent agendas, even though there's no items listed, I would like to request that items F, G, I, J, K, and M are moved to a consent agenda. And when we get there, if you, anyone likes any of those to be removed, it will be done so at that time. That's all I've got. I'd like to recognize Police Chief Gary Goodwin, Commander Aldra Crawford, as they recognize our 2025 Police Academy graduates.
We appreciate the opportunity to get to do this, to recognize our fine citizens that came and participated in our program this year. You know, throughout this program repeatedly, y'all have expressed your gratitude and appreciation to us. Let's go tell you, I want you to understand how meaningful you are to us and to our officers. We deal with the evil side of the world most of the time. And you understand now kind of how hard that is and how difficult that can be. So when we get the opportunity to be with the light, then it makes our life that much better and our job that much easier. And you're definitely the light, and to give of your time and come and participate and to get to know each and every one of you, it's truly been a blessing for us. So we really just want to say thank you. And we don't really have much that we can give you, but we do have a certificate for you, and I'm going to give you one of the coins that we give. And it's for people that go above and beyond, and y'all certainly have went above and beyond, and we want you to have this token of our appreciation. So thank you so much.
I say every year that the classes can't get better, but they continue to do so, and y'all are now officially my favorite class. The bar is high for 2026, that's all I can say. So y'all have been an absolute pleasure and a joy to be with for the past six weeks on Tuesday nights, and we've kind of joked about it. We're kind of lost on Tuesdays now. There's not a lot to do, and so I miss seeing you all on Tuesdays, and I appreciate y'all and your dedication to your community more than words can express. So without further ado. If y'all will, once you've received your certificate and your coin, if you'll just stay on the stage because we're going to get a group photo, okay? All right. Ms. Tiffany Battles. Mr. Jeff Cordell. Mr. Bill Dudney. Mrs. Robin Dudney. Vice Mayor Jennifer Duncan. Ms. Mary Duval. Mr. Seela Fox. Ms. Dory Greenlee. Mrs. Ashley Jones. Sorry, Mr. Jones is here as well, and he was in our class last year, so I'm sorry you've been beaten by the new generation. Mr. Joel Luckett. Mrs. Tammy Luckett. Mr. Frank Mink. Mr. Michael Moran. Edward, Mr. Eddie Travelstad. And last but definitely not least, Commissioner Jesse Walker. And ladies and gentlemen, I present to you your 2025 Session 18 Citizens Police Academy.
If I could have just a minute, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for the class, but my name is Bill Dudney, and I just wanted to say that as a class member, right off the bat, I was impressed by Commander Cherry Crawford, right out of the bat, at her passion for what she does and the work she does for the city. And if it's not out of place, I got a little gift for her if she'd like to come up here. It'll be a real surprise, I'm sure. I thought you were such an integral part of the department that I found some parts and that I thought, and put them together that I thought. And this is from the whole class, so. I'm going to read the inscription. It says, Commander Cherry Crawford, thank you for being at the heart of what it means to be the good in Goodlettsville.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to Commissioner comments, and I'm going to start by saying congratulations to our Vice Mayor for finishing the class, as well as Commissioner Walker.
We graduated. Y'all watch out.
And all the people who participated, thanks for your time and what you do and participate in our city. So thank you guys so much, too. All right, any other Commissioners?
I have one comment, Mayor Tenon. I'm pulling up the details just so I can speak on it correctly. The, I just want to give a quick plug, this Saturday, May 10th is the All About That Bloom Festival for the community. It's right here on Main Street. It's from 9:30 a.m. till 4:00 p.m., and it's to celebrate antique stores, our art groups here in town. There's going to be food trucks, live music, tons of vendors, so come on out. Looks like the weather's going to be good, so that is a positive. Again, it's the All About That Bloom Spring Block Party this Saturday, two days from now, 9:30 a.m. to 4:00, just all along the stretch. So come on out and check out what we have to offer here in Goodlettsville.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Any other Commissioners? All right. Hearing no more comments, Mr. Ellis, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As originally stated, there was no items on the consent agenda. I would like to ask you all by action to add six of the agenda items to that. They were F, G, I, J, K, and M. If no one has any objection to that, I will read each caption.
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution 251264 is a resolution to approve a contract between City of Goodlettsville and Tennessee Department of Transportation for maintenance of State of Tennessee right-of-way. Item G is Resolution 251265, a resolution proclaiming May 17, 2025, as kids to Parks Day in the City of Goodlettsville. Item I, Resolution 251267, a resolution approving an application with ARPS builds community grant with the Greater Nashville Regional Council. Item J is Resolution 251268, resolution of Board declaring May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the City of Goodlettsville. K, Resolution 251269, a resolution ratifying membership and permits to the, to the Goodlettsville Industrial Development Board. And item N is Resolution 251271, a resolution declaring certain property surplus to the needs of the City of Goodlettsville. I'd like to recommend those be added as consent items and then your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ellis, for item I, do we have a plan yet of where that will be done in Tennessee?
That is something that has been in place for years. It's where we mow the interchanges, pick up litter, street sweep, state highways. We get reimbursed for that, and it's a standard contract that we have had in place for probably 15 years, I'm guessing.
Any more questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Consent agenda items passed with a five-zero vote. Going on to unfinished business, Mr. Ellis, would you consider ordinance 25-1107, please?
Yes, sir, ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter 1 and 2 of the City of Goodlettsville Municipal Code as it relates to fire protection. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is second reading. Staff recommends approval. This is in regards to fire apparatus access to roads. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1108, please.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Goodlettsville adopted per ordinance 15851 by changing the zoning of 2.39 acres of property at Zero Hardaway Drive from R-25 Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Plan Unit Development, Medium Density, okay, Plan Unit Development, and preliminary master plan approval for six residential dwellings. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is second reading, requires public hearing, passed Planning Commission, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 251108.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Hearing no second, this will die on the table. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I guess there's no reason for a public hearing, so we'll move on to ordinance 25-1110, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, an ordinance of the City of Goodlettsville Board of Commission amending the Goodlettsville Municipal Code Title 17, Section 109, by deleting one portion of said section. Stated last meeting, this is a housekeeping matter where we had a conflict between our codes and the fees that was adopted per separate resolution. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 251110.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
A motion to consider.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1111, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Goodlettsville adopted per ordinance 15851 by changing the zoning of properties on Rivergate Parkway from CSL Commercial Services Limited to RC1 Regional Center Plan Unit Development, Zoning District, and preliminary master plan approval. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is second reading, requires public hearing, Planning Commission approved nationally, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. And do we have a motion to consider?
A motion to.
Carry on, carry on.
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion on this item? Cisco was the first.
I second. Somebody.
That's what I heard.
That's Cisco, he said he took second.
Yeah, that's why I heard it.
That's true.
All right, at this time, since we got it open, we're going to open the podium for the public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment, make your way to the podium. Please hold your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we'll close this portion of the public hearing, move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Moving on to new business, Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1112, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, an ordinance of the City of Goodlettsville, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, staff naturally recommends approval. I will make you all aware that this does not include setting the tax rate since we don't have the certified tax rate from the state due to Davidson County's reappraisal this year. So staff recommends approval of ordinance 251112.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1113, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners amending certain stormwater fees as originally adopted by passage of ordinance 13805. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is on first reading. As stated, this is the only increase in the stormwater rate that has been done since its inception, and that would take residential from $3.67 to $4.50 per month. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 251113.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
A motion to consider.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1114, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is an ordinance amending Title 13, Chapter 3, Section 311, Subsection 1 of the City of Goodlettsville Municipal Code entitled Landscape Maintenance Standards. By amending subsection 1, this is in regards to maintenance of residential landscape as well, the previous version was only commercial and industrial. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 251114.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1115, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, it's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to include sexual encounter clubs under the adult. to include sexual encounter clubs under the Adult Oriented Establishment Definition and Regulations. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this is on first reading, staff recommends approval of Ordinance 251115. Recommend.
Thank you, do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider Resolution 25-1263, please.
Yes, sir, it's a resolution to set the amount for the fee for service for residential solid waste. Um, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, as stated, we currently are working with a deficit in operations. Um, staff recommends approval of Resolution 251263.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider Resolution 25-1266, please.
Yes, sir, it's a resolution to authorize the employer participating in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, TCRS, to assume its employees' contributions to TCRS, up to 5% of the employees' earnable compensation. Um, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is something that we discussed in our budget workshop, and this would go into effect, um, July the 1st of this year. Uh, if for some reason it does not pass this evening, is deferred or any other reason, it would not be able to go into effect until October the 1st of this year. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 251266.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, do we have a motion to consider?
Motion to consider.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider Resolution 25-1270, please.
I'm getting there, Mr. Mayor.
You're good.
Uh, yes, sir, it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Goldsfield amending certain fees as it relates to Parks and Recreation Department. Um, these are fees that Ms. Jennings and her staff has worked through, uh, presented to me. Recommend those fees for approval, it will, uh, generate additional $46,000, uh, in revenue. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 251270.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes with a five-zero vote. Before we close tonight, is there any other Commissioner comments? Or staff comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all so much for coming.